...council meeting today is July twenty ninth, twenty twenty five. Time is six o'clock. Would everyone please stand for the prayer and pledges? Council, would you leaders please, sir?
Please bow your heads. Dear heavenly Father, as we gather in your name, we invite your divine presence to be with us during this meeting. May your spirit guide us, our thoughts, words, and actions that we will take to help resolve the issues that control us. We ask that you bless and protect our first responders, to include our long portion of personnel, and our men, men and women in the military, air station, in the United States and in other countries. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Pledge the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great state of Texas.
Honored Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the county of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Scott, go ahead and take a roll call, sir.
Yes, sir. Mayor Chris Carr.
Here.
Councilmember Mitchell Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Chris Ellis.
Here.
Councilmember Jay Reesmer.
Here.
Councilmember Greg Parton.
Here.
Councilmember Larry Sanders.
Here.
City Attorney Scott Francis.
Here.
City Engineer Greg Phipps.
Here.
City Secretary Marie Campbell.
Here.
Chief of Police Stephen Carlon.
Here.
City Administrator Scott Castle.
All right, before we go into public comments, I just want to tell everyone thank you for your patience. I apologize for not making the last two meetings. Thank you very much for covering those desks for me. I appreciate it. And at this time, let's go move into public speaking, public comments. First one up is Ernie Miller. Come on up, Ernie.
Well, this is the first man usually just watches at home, but I think this is time that I bring this to everybody's attention. Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you for your time and for all you do in our community. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of an elderly gentleman in our neighborhood who has been through difficult times and in frightening unsafe conditions. This man, who was incurred, uh, speaking, was currently on medication and may not fully understand the implications of his decisions about several individuals to move into his home. Since then, it has deteriorated. These individuals have filed, uh, filled the property with garbage, debris, and hazardous conditions. What I, what I started at the act of kindness has turned into exploitation. He, he no longer has the capacity to address it, and the health and well-being, uh, well-being are at risk. So what tonight is, I want to bring this to all your attentions because we, we, we had parents. We had somebody that we always looked out for. And I think tonight, we should start looking out for this, this man. I think we need to address possible order of changes or make some kind of amendments to these ordinance so this doesn't happen across the street from your home. And this won't go undetected for months. We just, I, I, I gave the, the mayor has some pictures. I really would appreciate if you look. And the first picture is of his home before these people started swatting in it. And I, like I said, I'm not usually one to do this, but this is something that hit me in heart. I, I wish this on no one. And I hope that somebody would take notice of this and do something with it. Instead of this gets pushed aside and your homes, or you have to back out every day and see this, or you have to worry about, this elderly gentleman, by the way, is in a wheelchair. The first time my wife and I met him, he was in a wheelchair smoking. We saw that he had burn marks in his wheelchair about that big. So he's a heavy smoker. These individuals, the first time, started that they thought it was fine, and they littered his front porch to the point where he couldn't get out the door. My wife and I paid to have this removed because we were worried about this man's well-being. This house catching on fire, I don't think I would be able to live with myself. Think it's time we start standing up for people that are in our community. These are people that we need later on in life. This is something that needs to be addressed, and I hope that you would address this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, next up, Mr. Hitt, come on up, sir.
Good evening, folks. So this is my third time speaking. I was here April, I was here in March, I skipped June, and I had a reason for that. My issue that I have with the city is with code compliance, not, not, uh, enforcing the ordinances as it pertains to maintaining, the, the property owners maintaining the right-of-way in the front of their house, in the front of the property. In addition, there have been some issues with homeowners in this, on the street I live on that, for whatever reason, the only time they mow the yard is when I submit a code violation, and the city tells them to mow it. That has gotten better, so I appreciate that. I now see that those people that weren't mowing their yards are now mowing it. They still wait till they get about twelve inches, okay? But they're mowing it. I'm not having to report those individual homeowners. My biggest complaint is code enforcement and the vacant or unincorporated, uh, undeveloped lots. I have fought for years, and it's every year I do the same thing. I stand up here and I complain about the island on Athens and Humbleberry. I have to look at that every day. I look at the vacant lot across the street from me, and I've been to the chief. I actually sat and spoke with the chief and Mr. Castleberry yesterday and expressed my concerns. I gave my opinion, I don't know for what that, that might have. But what I want to say is that I've lived in this community for twenty, for thirty-two years. For the first twenty-nine years, the city maintained the right-of-ways in front of these vacant lots. They mowed them. I, if it got out of hand, if, if they skipped it, my street, all I had to do was call the city. They would show up and they would mow. All this changed in twenty twenty-three. For whatever reason, the city decided to stop mowing these right-of-ways. And I guess it was based on the ordinance. The ordinance says it's the property owner's responsibility, but yet the city neglected to send out letters to these property owners advising them that, hey, we are no longer going to mow these right-of-ways. It's now your responsibility. And then when that did occur, code enforcement didn't enforce that. Because you can tell, these right-of-ways have, have not been mowed in two years. And it's sad. You drive down some of these streets, uh, my street Athens, I, I stay on top of that. I'm a thorn in the side, and I'm going to continue to be. But I went and drove back off of Parthenon and Four Fountains, uh, two weeks ago, and it's worse. It is pitiful, Athenian way. I submitted twenty-five code violations. Now, the chief tells me that those are, those will be dealt with. So I guess my question is, do I need to write code violation for every vacant lot in this community that is overgrown before action will be taken? Why haven't you guys, the council, realized that this is a big problem? It's not just one street, it's every street, it's every street. And if you decided not to mow these right-of-ways and no letters were sent, I think the city needs to be obligated to set a precedence to mow those things. Let's get them done. Then let's start enforcing the ordinance by sending out these letters to these, to these property owners. A lot of them are developers that had no interest in what the neighbor's lot looks like, okay? I had a big old speech here, but I've got, kind of rambled on and on about it. It, it's an issue. And for those of you in here, uh, that have this on your street, I urge you. I see your hand, and I've been here, I stood here twice and said, help me, get behind me, you know? Stand behind me or stand in front of me. Let's force this city to, to get back to either mowing the lots like they used to do or enforce the ordinance. Send those letters out now. There's only two, I did some, I did a cer, uh, some research. In section one and two, there's approximately two hundred undeveloped lots. If you take into account that of those two hundred lots, at least ten percent are owned by an individual that has a house built next to it, and they maintain that vacant lot. So now we're down to what, one eighty? If you would have sent out the four letters every day to those vacant lot owners, starting in May, I wouldn't be here today because probably those would have been mowed, or they would have been turned over to the city to mow. And you guys would have been collecting money or putting liens on properties. So I urge you again, or ask you, please, put this on the agenda, discuss it. Let's, let's get some action. Because as homeowners in here, it, it does nothing to help my property value. When, when you drive down and you've got an overgrown lot next to you, uh, so I urge you, take a hard look at this. Again, four letters a day, that's nothing. I think the biggest thing is that I hear is that code enforcement is only able to do his job half, half the time. Because the other half the time, he's doing permits, because the permit lady is spending half her time doing court. So at some point, we need to get to a full-time code enforcement officer because you can sure tell by driving the city that there's nobody enforcing the codes. And if that's my time, I wanted to share you, share this information again. I know it's redundant, you've seen it, but I'm going to keep putting it in front of you until I see, you know, some, that's, until I see improvement. And, and again, I have seen it on my street, but that's only because I'm a thorn in the side. I'm persistent, I continue to argue and, and, and voice my opinions. And if that's what it takes, maybe next month I'll see you guys complaining. So thank you for your time.
I appreciate you hearing me out. Council, you're the next. Mitchell Davis, I'm next, thank you very much.
My name is Mitchell Davis, I'm with the sixty-five Artisan Way. So following Mr. Hitt is, uh, same complaint is the lack of compliance with the code enforcement. That I see the same lots, the same violations, month after month after month. And Chief and I have had these discussions in my role as both a citizen and on council. I think we're being much too lenient in how long we give somebody to rectify the issue and how long it takes us to get out the letters to these people that in one case, I know it's been three months and a letter has still not been sent to make it an official violation. Yet when I read our ordinances, they have seven days from the time the notice is mailed to, to rectify it. No rain days. There's nothing in there got rain days, there's no ten-day window. It's seven days from the time the notice is mailed till they have time to correct it. And yet it's been three months since I first brought up some of these issues. The same thing with unmowed lots. Some of them are adjoining lots that are owned by the person with a house next to it, and they refuse to maintain the lot next to them. So my complaint is the same, that I think our code enforcement needs to be ramped up, whether that's assisted by other honorary officers or whether some of the council members like myself that have time to, to write the violations and you can sign it and send them out. Something needs to be done to improve the speed in which violations are corrected once they're reported. And Mr. Hitt, I would encourage you, pick up a package, right? Right now is the time to run for a position. So if you're pissed off about what we're doing, get up here and do a better job. Your way there to take any one of our seats, if you think you can do a better job at it. So step up and get on this side of the counter rather than just bitching at us. Step up and sign a package and run for office.
And last, and I'll leave, David Wayne.
Hello, everybody. Hello, council, thanks for being here. Uh, I would take a little bit of different approach to saying, probably just heard about twice. Uh, I'm with Bill, I, uh, we, we drove around quite a bit. It, it does affect, and, uh, they can raise our home values down, our property values down, but I look at it a little bit differently. Although it, it's, it's not a good look for the city. It's, uh, Bill's right, it has, has been, since twenty twenty-three, it's deteriorated. But I look at it from drainage point of view. We're in hurricane season. I see trees roaming some of the ditches in front of the culverts and hind the flow of water. And we spend a lot of money, a lot of money in here. A CO, four million dollars CO, yard rows and our drainage. Uh, that's a big investment. I think we need to protect that investment. I think everybody on council here don't want to have to make that investment again. Have a house in flood because ditches aren't clean. And it's going to be a firestorm on Facebook, and it's also going to be a liability to the city. I'm sorry, I should stand up straight. What changed in twenty twenty-three was it wasn't part of code enforcement. The city just did, uh, for the reason of drainage, which I know a lot of people here on council was very concerned about. And when you took code enforcement out of the picture and the city just did it, it got nothing. City looked great, home value stayed up, drainage was flowed very well. Like I said, we are in hurricane season. Uh, I think it's important, I think the engineer would agree, uh, members of council would agree, the mayor would agree. That's a high priority, we need to protect our investment, that four million. I think the city ought to go back to that. How that changed was when, when, when our administrator, Elizabeth Elaine, left, and we got a lady there April. Well, the, the head of maintenance convinced April that he was too busy to mow those right-of-ways. What, he had a, he had a substance abuse problem, and doing his job got in the way of that. So he convinced Elaine, the administrator, that they were unable, didn't have time to do it, but interfered with his other pleasures. So, you know, I think if we just do it, and if you want to set up a system or we, we build the people who have homes there and, and make them do it, that's great. Until a system gets put in place, it needs to be done for drainage issues. You know, that's my take on that. Sure, I'll give them, help them there, could look a lot better. I look at it more from a drainage point of view, not a, not a ordinance point of view. More of protecting our investments in our homes. And when it was out of the hands of the code enforcement, which drags that process out quite a bit. I agree, the chief didn't really do this. It takes longer to get done, and it just shouldn't be done. And we have, we have more property in city of Rome apart, we grew about sixty-one percent. And yet we still only have one additional maintenance. Maintenance has been hurting out for years more resources than has it been given from. We did hire an extra summer special, uh, special person coming here in the summer. I think that we should be, please be these two of them. And when section four gets built out, which it will, uh, we're going to have more permanent maintenance. But at least here in hurricane season, let's just get it done and worry about the, the logistics of who pays and get, until we get a process, and just get it done. Because it protects all of our homes, because we're also susceptible to flooding in certain areas. I know people in the audience that live atop of hills, they flood because of drainage. Not once or twice, because the ditches overflow. It's not unreasonable to ask the city just to do it, and we'll work out the logistics later when we're out of hurricane season. But until then, I would encourage that we drop the formalities of who has to do what, when, and let's just do it until we can figure out the process. Thank you for your time. Thank you, council, for listening to me.
Thank you, Dave. So I would tell you all during budget talks, we are looking to make the code enforcement not have to do permitting, perhaps do some other things to take some of that burden off of code enforcement. And yes, I know that maintenance is behind right now. Grass is growing really fast. And I too, Mr. Hitt, moved in here about thirty years ago. And when I moved in the mock cul-de-sac, there was two houses in there. And so when I would mow my grass, I would mow the ditches on the unincorporated, unimproved properties. So if you have an elderly neighbor or someone that perhaps is having some issues, I would suggest perhaps maybe just running that lawn over down, down that ditch one time to help them out. Not saying that you need to do it every time. But, uh, we used to do a lot of that, uh, in here back when I was just a councilman on this council. We would actually go and mow some, some areas, but we only had one maintenance person then, uh, back in those days, so. There's contractors, too, you have contractors, too. Yeah, but I'm thinking back when we just had Glenn and, uh, as council, we would go help Glenn out. We would mow some of the spots. I mowed my fair, fair share of the lot. Yeah. So anyway, I would just encourage helping, helping neighbors out. But yes, we will be having budget meetings coming up pretty soon, Scott. And we will be talking about, uh, some additional maintenance help and looking at a way to get code enforcement to be a full-time position rather than have to split his time between code enforcement and permitting. Could I add one more comment? Yes, sir, you may. So for, for those of you in the audience, call your county commissioner. The boulevard from the bridge to the highway is their responsibility. The north side has not been cut, you know, for two years. If you got any pull with the grave, I've already called, they're supposed to be looking at it, but I'm just one indivisal. You're talking about the boulevard from the bridge, fifty-nine? Yep. Oh, no, it's been mowed. There's a contractor that mows it.
I've seen him.
The north side has not been mowed in two years.
No, it hasn't been mowed. I've seen him.
Oh, it's been mowed. No, not the north side. Go now, because you've got six-foot trees in that ditch. No way. You're talking, you're talking about the, okay. Yeah, the north side of the boulevard. Between the bridge and, between the bridge and the columns, it's been mowed. Well, the city corrected it, the building does the other side.
On the, on the signs as well, I've seen contractors mow it, they've mowed it.
They have not mowed, I have, I'm sorry. You don't get six-foot trees in six months. Yeah, anyway, there is a contractor doing it now. The parks department was handling that, and they got turned over to a contractor. Pick up the phone, call your county commissioner. Yeah. All right, moving on, council. All right, let's move into item six, consent, agenda items discussed, approved items listed under the consent items. Let's look first at the minutes. This is a city council meeting, dated June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. This was a regular city council meeting. Each time, look over this. Council will also be reviewing minutes July seventh, twenty twenty-five. This was a special council meeting. All right, also, council, we are also taking a look at our maintenance report submitted for review. The next item will be our forward report. Anything we need to read on that? Scott? Or just a medical review?
Just a medical review. And also both, uh, all three of those are.
From parts, or what?
I said, where he wants to action. No.
Yeah, I know. I did that to her last time. Also, council, let's look at the permit report summary. So before we move on with consent, any questions on maintenance report or permit? All right, moving on to the financial report.
For the last part of the tax report for the general fund, we have eight hundred forty thousand, eight hundred thirty-six dollars and sixty-five cents. Reserve fund, three hundred eighty-eight, two sixty, ninety-seven. The asset forfeiture, fifteen thousand, fifty-one dollars, seven cents. FEMA, two hundred seventy-nine thousand, seven dollars and thirty-nine cents. COVID, global recovery, three hundred COVID, global recovery, three hundred fifty-five thousand, six twenty-six, and twenty-six cents. Two thousand sixteen certificate, we have thirty-eight thousand, five hundred fifty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents. And for the debt service, we have two hundred nineteen thousand, nineteen dollars and thirty cents. Giving a total of two million, one hundred thirty-six thousand, three hundred sixty and twelve cents.
Questions, council? Comments? You're good. We'll love it. Thank you, Mike.
Okay. Thank you.
Moving on, council, to city administrator report. Scout your officer.
So let's talk about the events committee first, Fourth of July parade. What a great success it was. Seeing the stewards here, I'm CBN and anywhere, but big thanks to you two for getting that put together, and also for Mr. Reesner up there on council that helped organize over at Dogwood, helping everybody in the right spot. Three of y'all did a great job, or a lot of other people, but y'all were the main ones that ran the meetings each time and got it organized and, yeah. We had about two hundred fifty participants that day coming from Dogwood along the river. Five hundred thousand people lined up, lots of candy thrown, lots of smiling kids, you know, fire police were there, antique cars, Shriners, Boy Scouts. We had residents walking, we had golf carts for residents, and there were even a few bicycles in there, so thank you for what you did, thank you for the city. I think a lot of people look forward to that each year. Since John Harp and all the maintenance department tonight, you know, they had weeded that whole Boulevard beforehand so that that would look nice. And I'm sorry that people couldn't pay attention and read what Chief put out there without not parking on the median, and that median was what we were trying to avoid. But, you know, they, they, they weeded that from the park all the way down and then all the way down after, just so it would look nice for the parade that day. I know that nobody really knows what goes on behind the scenes with that, that group. You know, they're just kind of the island of misfit toys out there. Larry, that's what Larry runs all day. And just so you know, you know, we're down to mow or two right now. They piece them back together each week, and we, we still go on. Some of those mowers from two thousand seven to two thousand, and it's not your problem, it's my problem, but I inherited that problem, and we're trying to do the best we can. So when I hear people, you know, talking about what's going on in the city with, with maintenance and the ditches, we drive the city. Once a week, they're driving, going past houses, there's something in the ditch, wood, I mean, something that needs to be moved so it doesn't clog your culvert. You know, we get out of the truck, we're moving that. We're not picking up trash at that time. We're moving things out of the way so that when the big rankings come, we can do that, which also then if something is in there, somebody might cut up wood and left the wood in our ditch, and they can come back and let code enforcement know, let Chief know, and then they can go and deal with that. Just things behind the scenes that nobody knows that happens, but they do happen. And just so you know, they, they work hard, so if you ever see them out there, you see them at the Fuel Max, and you buy an extra drink, most of them like that Mountain Dew. After that Fourth of July parade, what a success it was, they had the celebration at the park, and that was just another great three or four hours of food, fun, and fellowship with residents, with the council was there. Just, it was a great time. It's great for our city to celebrate together and to celebrate for the right reasons. Upcoming events, we got a garage sale next weekend, August first through the third, so get all excited about the community-wide garage sale, three days, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And then there's also August the ninth, we're gonna have here at City Hall, nine o'clock in the morning, coffee and donuts here at City Hall. And our events committee will be putting that on, so. Good job to you guys. Thank you so much for what you do. And the administration report, Mark, the drainage pipe, I told you about it last one, bad news again. The gas pipe that's running through the middle of it is still gonna have to be moved, and energy, energy is not moving too quick on that. I know that from Commissioner Gray's office, I don't know Scott's last name, but Scott's working, but he's come out here, we've met a few times with them, we've met with our water department, we found out there's also a sewer line that runs right on top of that pipe that they're gonna have to work around. So it's not as simple as just taking that pipe out and fixing an area and putting the two new pipes in. There's a whole lot of movement that's gonna have to happen with the gas company, so they have not set a date for that yet, but we're still coordinating that. When I get that, I will give that to you.
So a little update, and you, you may have already been on this, so Center Point is going to relocate that, that main gas line?
The one that, not the main one that's.
The one that goes under the ditch, it has to be covered with ripper out to keep it from being exposed?
Or.
They're gonna relocate that.
That one too.
They're gonna relocate that six to eight-foot deeper.
Okay.
They're gonna relocate the other line, even though they don't claim it, they're gonna relocate that at the same time. So that was another thing I got from Scott yesterday, from Mr. Brogdon.
For those of you that don't understand what he was just saying, if you go and you stand with that dealers, and you look where the, the outfall comes that way, you'll see about, I don't know, six feet by four feet of cement fibers that the gas company put on top of that pipe that comes up, and it's sitting on top of it, and it's too high. So when the water from the outfall gets there, until it pushes it on top of it, it doesn't, it doesn't move down towards the, towards the big pipe and get through to the other side of the Boulevard. So them moving that and lowering that, that's gonna really help that water coming off of Venus Street coming that way, it's gonna move it a lot better for residents on that street and the water that flows from different parts to that, so. Good job for them for doing that. And I'm sorry they don't claim the pipe, but that gas pipe is there right near the middle of craziness. The outfalls that Commissioner Gray is gonna be clearing, that date is not a firm date yet, but it's coming, but I think they want to make sure that pipe is done first because it does have part of the outfall cleared that goes with it, and so they can't get the crews out of here, finish, and then do the pipe and come back. So just gonna be a little bit longer till they get started on that. The swimming pool up front, school starts on Wednesday, August sixth this year, so this coming weekend will be the last full weekend with, with the full week open. After that, we'll be open just on the weekends through Labor Day. Saturdays, you're gonna change to noon to seven, with Sunday still being one to seven. Splashdown will still be open every day except for Wednesdays, and we'll keep everything open, especially the splashdown through Labor Day, and if the weather's still ninety degrees and above, the splashdown will stay open a little longer for the kids, especially on the weekends. If you got questions about pool or splashdown, give me a call. Several new businesses opened this month. Legendary Cuts down by the Fuel Max is fully open now, and Cupid Confections across from the park has opened. So if you get a chance and you want to, please shop local, those are two new places within our city. Go to the new medical building, which is right down here where the old Dollar Tree used to be. Their projected date now is August the nineteenth. So we'll see if that one, and then the, the Deli and Liquor Store that's on Appian Way, they're just, they think they're gonna open up one without the other, and I'm not sure which one they're going with first, but they're moving a little bit slower than they were. But they will be eventually open, and I have no news on the, anything up in the front where the other store was gonna be. But lots of exciting things happening for that. Comprehensive plan is on the board up front. Tell you when you come across, you go to www.ritx.org, and you can click on that plan and look at that comprehensive plan. If you got comments, you send them to me here at City Hall, and I'll make sure they get to the company that's putting on and putting this whole thing together. Any comments are welcome. They're open for another, I think, two more weeks, and then it'll close down, and we're hoping that they do their presentation and make finalizations to it at the August council meeting. Election information is available on the city website also. If you're residents, you can contact City Hall about any questions. Packages are already printed off. You can come up and pick one up, but you have to turn it in by Monday, August the eighteenth, at five o'clock. After five o'clock, five oh one, the doors are locked, and we won't take any more applications. But if you're wanting to come up and you just want to get a packet, come up to C M three, and she'll take care of it and give it to you. If you want just information you want to read online, there's a whole election, election section on the, on the website.
Two council positions and the mayor this time?
Positions are, are open, they'll be running in, position one, Mr. Pardons, Mr. Ellis is at two, and the mayor's at, the mayor's. So those are the three positions that are open this year. They are two-year terms if you are a public.
Volunteer.
Yeah, it's a non-bane job. Anybody, anybody that has anything they need to talk about or anything, I'm here all week. Feel free to come by.
Question, I'm not sure if it's for you or for the mayor. Councilman Sanders has a couple of times suggested a full-stop at Appian and Roman Forest before the clinic opens, and we get a lot of people that are not familiar with our city. Does council have to vote on that to approve it, or can city administrator just have them installed if that's the way we want to go? If it's not on the agenda, I know we can't speak about it, but what is the process? Does it have to be council approved, or can that be approved just by the mayor and the administrator without having us vote on it?
No, that needs to be put on the agenda, discussed by council, approved by council, and then we'll send that on to the commissioner's office, whatever. If the decision is made to request that, we'll, we'll let Commissioner Gray request that.
And Mr. Sanders did ask.
Does the commissioner have a say in that?
No, however, he can make things happen a little sooner.
Understood.
Okay, that's, that's the reason why.
That, that was on the original agenda for tonight. Mr. Sanders not talked about it, and we took it off for tonight. It can go back on, but there were reasons why we took it off right now.
Okay.
You know, a lot of people have called once they heard that last week, asking questions about, do you have to do a traffic study? What do you have to do to that because of the type of intersection it is? Those are things that I'm still researching because way out of my realm of expertise, I probably refer to Scott to help me with that if we need to do that. That's the direction that we want to go.
But our first step is have a council approve it.
Right, it just, that is the highest area of traffic accidents within the city is that intersection, and it's addressed in the comprehensive plan as well. It's a suggestion to, to put one in.
Much as I hate to say it, I do agree.
Anybody's got questions about behind-the-scenes things with anything we're doing, feel free to come on by. I'm here for seven AM, and I leave at five.
Council, questions for Scott on his report, as he sets his seat.
No, sir.
I have.
Actually, it's not a question. It's kind of a statement for all, everybody that's
in here. When it's too hot in the afternoon, it's heat stroke time, you're driving down the Boulevard, you've got a cold drink in your hand, I hope you're holding on to the steering wheel at the other one. I want you to notice that about eight out of ten times, you're gonna see one of the maintenance guys out there in all that bad weather, taking care of the median and doing something else in the city, and kudos go to just the maintenance, because that's dedication.
Very well said, councilman. Jake, why don't you give us a please, officer?
All right. It'll be all, it'll be easier for me to just do it one at a time, and run back. Okay. Office pertains to what's in our. I'll give you one sound later. All right. All right, so the police sta, the extension of the police station building project is pending, the presentation of plans for approval, which is later on in the, it was an agenda item, it's gonna talk about, we've been collaborating with architect and engineer to finalize these plans, so that'll be talked about a little bit later in the agenda. Both the twenty-twenty-four FEMA grants have been completed. FEMA has been asking for clarifications and making slight adjustments, and we anticipate FEMA will swing forward the grants for state review, which, that's why I hand it out. State has reviewed some of the projects. There's a couple more projects. We were talking numbers before, and I said I didn't want to say what the numbers were. Larry had asked me some of those questions. I have some numbers now. I can ask you to say what the numbers are because they're finalized. There is, this is out of the two events. If you look, look at it, it says forty-seven eighty-one, that's the flood. If you look at the one that says forty-seven ninety-eight, that's the hurricane. So I got two projects from the flood that have to be finalized, and any day you'll see the money in the bank, this deposit. So T E D M has approved, so FEMA can't give us money without going through the state, and T E D M is the one to come in with the fancy to come make sure everything's right, and that has been done. So there's two projects from the flood, which are the, the park repairs. Park repairs are, is the track and the parking lot for the track. If you remember right, the entire track is underwater. The track is made by recycled asphalt, and that didn't do too good with all that water, so the, the project, we're responsible for twenty-five percent. The feds pay seventy-five percent. The, the portion that we get from the feds, which should have a deposit any day, is thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred forty dollars and sixty-one cents. That's what we have to do to project unless we put extra money on top of it. So the engineer will have a similar, like, a jet item eight, the engineer's going to have a similar project. The engineer's going to have a similar project line item for that as well. And we'll probably start that next agenda. I'm sure he'll have some input later on there, his report of what we need to do. But it's going to be very similar to agenda item eight that's on there now. And that'll probably stay on there until the project's done. So it'll be a repeating agenda item until it's done. We have till November to get it done. That's not going to happen, but we have till November to get it done. If we had the funds to do it right away, we would have done it. And then we would just be waiting for the response to be replenish our funds. But we're waiting until we know exactly what we're going to get, so we know exactly what we're going to do. And we'll have to file for extensions. It's just going to happen and that's what we do with some of the other projects we're picking up. The road project for that flood is, I don't have the exact number, but it's not here because it hasn't been finalized by the state yet. So if y'all have any questions about that number, I think it's going to be, it will be at the meeting. And I'll share that with you, but it's not final until they go through the review process. So I don't want to say a number and be wrong. That has not been finalized, so I don't have it. Hopefully by next meeting I'll have that. And that again, that's the road repairs and stuff that we need to do. Most of it in section two. And that, that will also be due by November. We have to complete the project by November without extension. Of course, we're not going to be able to complete it. So because the process to get it started is going to be that long. So we'll be doing extensions. We have to do extensions and so often for the other grants that we've done before. The other page. For some reason I have two of the seven. Some, I gave somebody my.
What are the protective measures both under rural and under the flood?
Yeah, protective measures is the things that the, yeah, this one. So the one that says from left to right, twenty four thousand, eighteen thousand, six thousand. That one is emergency protective measures. Where that comes from, so the police department does a bunch of work using police cars, boats, or whatever they're using, we get reimbursed for the hours that we use the equipment for and we get reimbursed for the overtime that we spend to make it happen. And you know, any extra labor, any extra equipment that we use. If maintenance needs to do something, might cut a tree out of the road, we get reimbursed a certain dollar amount per hour that that chainsaw's being run or the truck or the tractor or whatever, so.
So in these cases, are these past tense for work that's already been done and they're making that reimbursement now, so that's money coming into the city that we don't have to pay out that additional thirty thousand dollars?
Right, so in some cases we were under budget, in some cases we were over budget. But yes, this is what fulfills that void. That's what that is. And then the other one, the forty seven ninety eight, where it says public assistance ramp, forty seven ninety eight, was the one for the hurricane so far. Actually, I think that might. I have to put some thoughts in, but I think that might be the only thing under the, I'm pretty sure that's right. No, there's one more, I'm sorry. There's a donated resources that has not been finalized yet, so there's going to be one more. And donated resources will help offset some of that twenty five percent. So this is same thing, emergency protective measures. It's on the trees that were cut, all the extra expense we had because of the, most of the part of the day. So that's, that's fingers enough. I finally had some numbers to give y'all. Somebody has two of some, one of another. Not having the right paperwork, but I've had you, Scott said maybe in this, I've presented online. All right, any questions on that? Roman Forest Police Association is successfully conducting a flood drought again. We've been doing it every quarter and this is a test. So as long as people keep donating, we're just going to have to bust them by and let everybody's load. So that, that's pretty good. I think we've been doing it probably two years now, about every quarter, so. And Roman Forest Police Department is proud to announce the launch of our new mobile app. It's available on Android or iOS app. The app is called Police Connect. You can find it, I'll put a link there. Once you download the app, scroll down, select Roman Forest as your city. It will default to Roman Forest when you open the app after selecting it. There's a link on our website, rtt.org/polic. And there's little, what do you call those QR codes right here that you can just put it on your camera and go straight to download it. I handed y'all a little flyer that says everything I just said and for y'all, I put it out there for you. It's on the table. So far, we have, I guess it's been online. I put it on Facebook and people's been downloading it. So far, it's turning into the parking violation notification system for us and the code enforcement violation notification system. That wasn't exactly what it was intended for, but it gives information to the public. Surely the public's seeing that information because we can't tell if somebody's seeing all that. But from our end, the emails that we get for the notifications is code enforcement and parking violations for some. But that's what it's there for. New refrigerator bags I've been ordering and I got this the other day to look at. I, I need to talk to them about the quality of building and decide what I'm going to do there. So it features the new non-emergency law enforcement dispatch number, which is nine three six, three five, three, sorry, nine three six, five three eight, fifty nine hundred, option two. Same thing that we had before where we have refrigerator bag at everybody's house. But what I'm going to do is somehow get these to every resident. I'm going to talk to Chad Ski over at the flood district to see if maybe she could help mail out some of this, save, save us a postman. And if not, I'll just have to bystand and mail it to everybody. But I'm going to include a letter in there to please throw away the old one. And that way we don't get a confusion because the old number still works, but it's not option three anymore. It's option eight and I don't know how long he's going to go with option eight. Anyway, that changed the number, it was beyond my control. And I'm just having to respond to getting that advertised out to our residents. And with the biggest sorrow, we announced passing Michael Jefferson. He's a former officer of the Roman Forest Police Department and the watch was June twenty second, twenty twenty five. On July fifth, the Roman Forest Police Department, along with friends, family, fellow officers that are now here, saw me lay Michael Jefferson to rest. Chief Carlout presented Michael's daughter with the Texas flag. Michael Jefferson honorably, honorably served his country as a member of the United States Army from nineteen seventy nine to nineteen eighty five. And later in his community as a Roman Forest Police Officer till May of twenty seventeen. And so he was a past officer. He didn't work for us at the time of this passing. Since he left here, he became a reverend. And his brother actually performed the service. His brother's also a reverend, same. A very interesting funeral, plus nice people. And I, I've worked with a, a relative of his that was Harris County Honor Guard. So me and him together did the presentation. So any questions about the stats? I'm going to talk about code enforcement here before I get into that kind of question about all that. So code enforcement, I have stats here for code enforcement, but stats sometimes don't tell you everything that we're doing. I think it's been discussed already. I'm, I'm in charge of supervising code enforcement and I'm trained code enforcement. I supervise it and code enforcement isn't so long. We're doing code enforcement one hundred percent of the time. It was my suggestion in September of last year that because permitting was having so much problems, we get all kinds of complaints with permitting, that I suggested that since code enforcement is pretty much called up, but permits are behind. So I suggested let's get, but we were hiring a new code enforcement officer at the time anyway. So I suggested let's get code enforcement in to help permit. I knew that was going to probably cause code enforcement to back up a little bit. And it sure has. You can see with all the public speaking today that that was a main topic here. But code enforcement is working on it, but they also take care of permits. If you notice permitting has quieted down. The problems with permitting has quieted down, so. Now permitting is, I don't know, maybe you can call it, I don't, I don't deal with permitting directly, but I supervise the guy that is handling it. And it sounds like permitting has, we got a handle on it closely, but now code enforcement is getting back up. We'll try to get that, I've, I've had ideas and my ideas that I've communicated to you. Have the officers be somebody eyes and ears for code enforcement. Well, what's that, what that's doing is putting a list, a to-do list that keeps getting longer and longer. He still has to get to it. I've been helping with code enforcement myself, but I have a lot of admin duties I got to do and stuff like that. So there's a lot of buts. Officers recognize there's a problem, we pass it on. The list just keeps getting longer. So I've got to find a solution because I'm supervising the code enforcement. I'm going to find a solution. We'll figure it out. And I have some ideas and plans. Like I said, just bear with me a little bit. But I take full responsibility of the backlog and hold you accountable. I'm holding him, I'm still training him. So just please, eat at me, whatever you got to do, I can take it. Just do it, communicate with me. And I encourage the public too. I'm never going to place blame on one individual person. I'm going to take the blame myself and I'm going to try to do better. So that's all I can say about code enforcement. We're, we're just going to make it better. Hopefully we can all work as a team. Any questions on that?
Chief, thank you again.
Thank you.
Council is looking at all items listed under number six, consent agenda items. If there's no discussion on any thing listed there, I would just give a motion of exception to approve, presented.
How much motion to approve?
Motion by Councilman Sanders to approve consent items as presented. Do I have a second? Second, Councilman Davis. All in favor of approval? Edition now. Moving on to item seven, discuss considering status of following projects. Any action required? Mr. Phillips, you're up, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I do not have anything specific to address council with other than we, that we have been working with Scott and a couple of the residents concerned with some of the drainage. I think we have, it resolved as part of the city is concerned. But we'll see how that goes. As the chief mentioned, FEMA money coming in for the park repairs and then you'll most likely have the second project coming in. Those projects will be required to be publicly bid. So we'll have an agenda item with Scott and the chief and put an agenda item on for the next council meeting to authorize the preparation of plans, specifications and go through creative process item by item. So it looks like the date here is November of twenty twenty six. Hopefully that's twenty twenty six is the correct number. So that gives us about a year and a half to get these done. If we can't get the park and the track done in a year and a half, we, we better make some changes. So that, that will be on your agenda for next month. Hopefully council approves that and we'll move forward with the progress there. I don't have anything else. Was there questions?
Do you have any insight on start date for health falls from commissioner's office?
I do not, okay. Thank you.
I'll get with, with Josh.
Okay, were you up on the center point agreeing to relocate the line?
I had heard that. We have been trying to get them to do that for a long time. Nobody wanted to claim right lines.
Have you ever seen a gas line bored through that hole?
Actually, yes, we have.
You have, okay.
Yes, we have.
Okay.
It, they go right through it. We, we have a lot of communication lines. Go through water lines, sewer lines.
Okay.
You'd be surprised what they can bore through.
Well, they, if they were trying to.
Intentional or not?
Yeah, well, they, if they were trying to center it, they did it, did it excellent.
Yeah, that is exactly right. So, yeah, they, it's, it's like putting a lab in the middle of the field, put someone on the doser. All you're doing is putting the target and stuff.
Any questions on number seven for Mr. Phillips? Okay, we're going to move on to item eight. Consider items related to police station building expansion and the taking of any action required in connection there.
Do you want to turn eight over to?
Yeah, it's fine, we're moving on to eight. It's too quick for me.
Okay, so on that, we are asking council's consideration to authorizing your city engineer's office to prepare plans, working with other consultants and Larry on putting that project together and getting it out ready for council's approval. And then we will go from there into the third step of having council authorize us to bid the project and to award construction. I think we have till also November of twenty six to get that project done. So with your, with your action tonight, we should have that project completed well within the time limit.
Yeah, so basically we're going to authorize you, city engineer, to prepare plans and specs for that.
We will bring in structural consultants, work with Larry, architect, electrical, plumbing, HVAC, everything that is needed with that and work with the chief and putting those plans together.
And you're in on this like close to it?
Can be.
So we talked about only two council members can be involved.
You're one of them.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Whoever else wants to volunteer, but you definitely.
Larry's involved because he's done some architectural work.
Say it again.
Larry's involved because he's doing some architectural work.
Okay. So if there's no objection to that, that'll be the two councilmen involved with this project? Y'all get with that?
So I need a motion and a second, or if there's no other discussion, sorry. We would need a motion and a second to allow Mr. Phillips to proceed with the city engineering. Do we need to authorize a budget amount?
I think we need, do need to discuss the dollar amount.
Like a not to exceed.
Not to exceed amount.
We are, with the, with the fourth plan, we will come in and have a, a specific proposal from all of the consultants for you to consider.
What, what are we approving to spend with this tonight?
Really nothing in that if it authorizes me to go get the consultants and put together the proposals and everything, then we'll get that approved through inside of that money. And, but we will start plans, so we, at this point, we're not building anything on. We're just still currently working on it.
Satisfied?
Absolutely.
So I would need a motion and a second to allow Mr. Phillips to prepare plans and specifications and bring a cost to council.
Mayor, I make a motion that we prepare plans and all the specifications. Let me get my mind, that we prepare plans and all the specifications required to proceed with the addition of police annex building required. addition of police annex built in our property, decided to call it.
Giving, and city engineer the authority, and giving the city engineer the authority to do it. I'm not sure what else we need to fulfill that, or did? You're good. Motion on the floor, Councilman Reasoner, to city engineer to allow city engineer Greg Phillips to prepare plans and specifications for the building expansion at City Hall. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All right. Councilman Sanders, seconds. Any other discussion, questions, all in favor? Or get this announced?
Thank you.
What is that first page, how long will that take?
I have a question for the next council.
Next council. Moving on, council, item nine, discuss consider action concerning variance approval for the height of the Exxon sign at the fuel max on the corner of Trem and Galaxy on the work floor. Who's, who's item is this?
Item four.
Oh, which here?
I don't think Mr. Ali's here, so I'll present it for him. He's the owner of the station at Exxon. The sign is twenty-four feet tall, or ordinance says that a sign could be no more than twelve feet tall. Brought to our attention, so he's asking for a variance. They did go through plan review, it did go through Veritas, and through a lot of people that missed it. So there's a lot of, lot of responsibility that people didn't get as we got to it. So with him, he's asking in his letter that he wrote to, since it wasn't his fault, and we approved it all the way through, that he's asking for him to have a variance, to be able to leave that up and not have to make adjustments to it.
Just a question, typically in building permits, it is your fault if you don't specifically call out that it doesn't meet code when you're applying for it? So did he specifically call out that he was building it larger than what our ordinance allows?
All those permits were approved long before I took this job, so I can't answer that with it. I can't answer that.
I don't know if you know. I mean, we, we had his plans that he submitted, right?
I did a code enforcement investigation on it, and then I passed it on to the city administration, once I found that it was a permitting issue, I complimented him a bit. So I researched it, and it was, it was prior to Scott being hired here today.
I'm not saying I'm okay with it or not, I'm just saying typically with any municipality or whether it's Harris County or City of Houston, right, if, if you don't specifically call out that you're making a deviation from what's allowed, then it's still on you whether or not it's approved.
Well, let me tell you what I found. So they submitted the plans, it was completely detailed. A professional sign company submitted the plans, had specific twenty-one feet high and stuff like that. So it was clear as day exactly what they were putting in. It went through plan review, and Bureau Veritas approved the plans, and they installed it. There was no mention even that they were violating ordinance, he of course had no idea.
But that's their obligation, right? Is they have to know our ordinance when they design it.
That would probably be a legal question, but the city approved it, the city passed it on a plan review, the city passed it on mid inspections, and they passed it on the final inspection. So I found it hard to enforce code enforcement wise, knowing that the city approved this three or four different times. And so I passed it on to Scott and work administration. But I did double check everything, and everything pointed at the city approved this, city approved that, so it was operating off of what the city has approved. So that's what I, and the, the signed permit, you did sign permit, it's good for one year, and then it renews every year. So he's got the permit for one year. The city can not renew it, but I don't know how fair that is to somebody that the city approved. I can give you my opinion if you want it, but I deserve it for myself if you don't like.
I'm, I'm seeing on a permit that was dated here, that this was done June twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, so well past that year now. So, so we're going to go on to the second year for additional permit versus?
That was, that was the initial, what was the permit? The permit's not completed until it's inspected. So it was inspected less than a year, the final inspection. So that best, that's year one starts that day, which I don't remember what that is.
Scott?
What grant, the permit was granted outside bounds of the ordinance allowed. Without looking at the specific area of the ordinance, I think it's on the permit inspectors to make sure that if there is a violation of what the sign needs to be to deny the permit or issue it back with reasons for why it would be denied or chances that need to be made. That wasn't done. It was passed as, it was accepted as according to what it was submitted, which shows, it does show what the ordinance is going to be. I, yeah, I think you're at the point right now, if what's done is done, it's now, do you want to do a permit, or do you want to deny a, renewing of a permit based on a violation of the ordinance, or grant a variance so the sign can stay in place and renew the permit with, per the, with the variance in place?
What are our legal obligations, and what happens?
Those are your two options.
Okay, can I do the variant?
You can, you grant the variant, and without granting the variance, you shouldn't renew a permit with the sign as it. You can renew the sign, the permit, the sign as is, only if you grant a variance or the sign.
Well, if we did not grant the variant, there, there's a sign now.
It wouldn't have a permit for it, if the sign had a fifty thousand dollar sign.
And is it all three signs, the fuel max, the sign C, the taco corner, and the standalone sign on the corner, versus only the standalone sign?
It's the standalone, it's the standalone.
Something next to last page in your packet, maybe not the next one. It's just the sign towards the right order goes up.
Yeah, it's just a one sign. If I may, when you drive down, I go down every so often because it's diesel cheaper than any place else. And aesthetically, it looks okay, it looks better than a lot of places when you drive down other parts of the surrounding community.
Is it just the rest of the town?
So that would be mine of, my thoughts on this council is that since it went through the process, in good faith went through the process, perhaps he did not realize the height was not what it was supposed to be when he submitted. I think since he went through the process and the process was approved by a third party hired by the city, I think that I don't see how we could not grant the variance without the sign staying the height that it is, which would allow us to renew his permit every year. If we do not grant the variance, we cannot renew the permit for the next year or the year after that. My opinion.
I would, I would do a whole other motion, give him a variance on the sign, since the seed made respect on it, and our inspector plans mistake, that really was not his fault. So I whole other proposal, we'll do that variance.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, Councilman Sanders to approve the variance for the sign at the Exxon station, corner of Roman Fore, Bull Guard, Trem, Galaxy. Yes, do I have a second? Second, Councilman Reasoner, any other discussion, council?
Yeah. You want to side talk?
Yes, sir.
Just that side.
No, go ahead.
Okay. So, so just my thoughts, I think he, he put in, did his part. We screwed up. So it should, should be on us to make it right. But I think we also should think about making that situation right at some point in the future. So, you know, my thoughts are with grant variance, but we also, you know, what's the lifecycle of the sign, right? And that sign's good for five years, and he's got to replace it in year six, that we should require him to go back to what, what our, what our ordinance says. I don't think legally put that into a, to a motion, but that would be my-
Good question. How do we amend the motion to include that?
If, so- You want to, sorry, can you say you want to have a six, grant variance for a period of time, and then to which it would expire?
Yes. So question, question number one, what's, what's the lifecycle on a sign like that, right? I'm sure it's gonna go out of date at some point, there'll be branding or new logo or, or something. I don't know if that's five years or seven years or whatnot. And we could, we could take a best guess at what that might be, a fifty thousand dollar sign, and I don't know what the, the time it takes to pay that out before you think about replacing it. But whatever that timeline is, I'd like to see it go back down to a monument sign.
How about- The permit needs to be renewed each year, is that correct?
Yes.
So essentially, you can make the variance good year on year.
Well, that's another question, like, do a variance for five years and then we readdress it?
Well, might make the variance just for that sign, if the sign ever has to be replaced.
Or-
Has to be replaced according to ordinance, whatever that-
I mean, they don't even need to say it has to be replaced according to ordinance, they would have to, they would have to re, apply for permanent under.
So the variance would only apply to that particular sign, or is it able to modify it, right? If they change from Exxon to a Shell, if they change from Taco Corner to Taco Laredo, are they able to modify it? Or are you saying that it can't ever be modified?
I guess that depends on how specific you want to name it.
I understand, I mean, that's just a question, right? So the, the sign itself, marginally there are twenty years.
I agree.
The question is, that's gonna be the look for, when you come into that side of Roman Forest, as Galaxy expands, that's gonna be the first thing you see coming through Roman Forest.
The other thing we have to consider is, this is probably the first of many businesses that are gonna build on our-
Galaxy.
Galaxy, and within the city there. And everyone is gonna wanna come in and go, well, he's got the high sign. We need to be able to say, well, he's gonna have to bring in compliance in X number of years.
I mean, one way to do it is just you grant the variance for the, the current app, permit application. And then, I mean, that would make you have to do it each year, grant a variance again and again and again, so that's the sign is-
I like that.
In working order. But that might be the cleanest way of making sure that you're not granting a open-ended variance for that location in that.
Because it does start out as a permit for the sign, all the other ones are renewal. If a tree hit the sign and it knocked it down, he would have to apply for a new permit for a new sign, so it would be a new permit, not a renewal. Maybe that's what the attorney is.
Well, that's very simple, right? I mean, that's like frustration with this particular individual, right, is we're granting a variance now for this sign, we've already granted a variance for the fence, right? How many other things were not compliant when they submitted their permit that we just didn't catch? And I somewhat disagree that it's the city's responsibility to catch their mistakes. It's their responsibility to build to our code, it's not our responsibility to check their work to make sure that we caught all of their mistakes.
And, and that's a fair point, is we're at the point right now to where it is.
It's built.
They have to renew their, their permit, so they, we are at, we either grant a variance or renew the permit, or don't grant the variance and don't want to grant, renew a-
Okay, I'm gonna, mayor, my proposal, that we grant him a variance for one year, renew at every sign, from time, he has to do a signed permit, we have to do a variance or no variance.
Amended, amended motion, Councilman Sanders, so if I understand correctly, you're gonna grant the variance on the, on the current permit?
Yes.
When that permit renews, this variance does not apply?
The variance.
Is that correct?
What, he'll have to come back and renew the variance.
Okay. Would you like to still second that motion, Councilman?
He's not gonna make you change it, which I don't think you should. Then shouldn't you make that like three years, or give it like three or four years and see where the sign is, like the trees have tree could fall on it, something could change. Otherwise, you're gonna be going back every year on a variance on that same sign.
I will, I will change it to two years, not three.
What you can do-
That's two, a couple of hurricane seasons?
You can make a variance for the sign that was submitted under the application and for no other subsequent signs or variations of this sign.
So I definitely agree with that, that it should only be the sign that's currently erected, not, so we can't put up any additional signs to violate our ordinance.
The second was the wrong one. So if you'd like to amend your motion again, go right up.
I figure I have a minute.
Yes, sir.
Only, only to the point, is we're giving them a one-year, one-year-only variance, and every year to be, through, through the city council, and anytime they vary what the sign is up there right now, the variance is void, and they have to replace the sign.
Would you agree to your motion being to allow the existing sign to remain, and that it cannot be amended, altered, or changed? And when it is, then the variance is not, is not, does not count? I don't know how to put that, tell me else, Scott.
I make a motion to grant the variance for the current existing sign, for the life of the current existing sign as submitted in the application and currently erected.
Okay. You get, you get with, you get with the language on that?
Now, before we pass it-
Can I ask your question?
Hang on, I got a motion on the floor. Let's, let's get a second on it, and then we can have discussion. Is there a second on this motion? No, second. Do get, Councilman Park, Councilman Park, second, discussion.
So is the sign ordinance that the maximum height of any building signage is twelve foot, so even the signage on the building itself can't be taller than twelve foot, or only a pre-standing?
Only the pole sign.
Pole sign.
And that, that is classified as a pole sign? A pole sign can only go twelve foot above the road. So it can be fourteen feet, as long as the bottom of it is two feet below the road. So twelve feet above the road for pole sign. And if there's limitations on pole sign, it can't have a car or airplane or boat sitting on top of it, it can only have the cycles.
Any other discussion before we vote on that motion and second?
Yes. Go ahead. Now, this, does this variance include, I mean, like you said, what happens if a tree falls and hits the sign, if the sign has to be replaced at that point in time? The issue is the cost to the customer, their being the customer of the city, if you would, of being the cost, that's a fifty thousand dollar sign, or whatever the cost would be. And it could last for years, we don't want them having to stay here to be, have to put in some large amount of money.
I would say if the-
If the-
I would say if the tree fell on it, its useful life was over.
Yeah, well, then that's a good term.
So the sign was currently erected.
Yeah. Go ahead, any other discussion? We're ready to take a vote. I have a motion on the floor, I have a second. Councilman Park, all in favor of approval? You're not gonna vote for your own motion? One, two, three. All against. Did you vote for?
I'm, I'm-
He voted with it. I've got four for, against. Did you vote for?
I did not vote for or against.
Or against. Abstentions? Councilman Davis abstains, I've got four.
I just think it does not set a good precedent for our city going forward to have-
I've got four.
Yes, sir.
I got four proven motion, I got one abstention, the motion does pass. Did you get all that language, right on that?
We, we should have a big product.
Yeah, no, that's good. Item ten, discuss consider approving resolution, this is resolution three two zero dash two five, this is a resolution of the city council of the city of Roman Forest calling for the holding of a general election on November fourth, two thousand twenty-five. This is just us approving- This is just us approving to have the election for our city. I just need a motion and a second.
We need to sign this afterwards.
After we assign it, yes, sir.
Yes.
And she's got a.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion that we approve resolution three-twenty-dash-twenty-five for city of Roman Forests calling for the holding of a general municipal election on November fourth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion on the floor, Councilman Davis, approving resolution three-two-zero-dash-two-five, calling for the election of November fourth, twenty twenty-five. Do I have a second?
Yes, sir.
Second, Councilman Pardon, I think, has made a reach. All in favor of approval? One, two, three, four, five, unanimous. Item eleven, connected to this, discuss, consider approving resolution three-two-one-dash-two-five. This is a resolution to hold a joint election with Montgomery County, Texas, which reduces our cost to voting machines. I would just need a motion and a second to approve a joint election with that, with the county.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Okay. Motion on the floor, Councilman Sanders, to approve resolution three-two-one-dash-two-five as presented. This is to hold a joint election with Montgomery County on November fourth, twenty twenty-five. Do I have a second? Second, Councilman Davis, all in favor of approval?
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, discussion?
So how much does it cost us to do this joint election?
The bill that we just received for the last November's election was fourteen thousand and two hundred dollars.
Yes.
Four thousand, six hundred dollars.
Wish we could go back to paper ballots. Three hundred dollar election back in nineteen ninety-eight.
All the election costs went for everybody in Montgomery County. And due to the people that work come from a certain vendor. The vendor raised the cost forty-eight percent. And we're eating that cost. And we also went to two polling places in the last November incident here, polling on everyone. All those things taken into consideration, Mayor, last November.
Are we allowed to do paper ballots if we just did a case and again? ADH doesn't need to do it. What, but the more municipalities within the area that co-op.
That is true, but there were a lot that didn't have enough people to run. All they went uncontested, so most people were not considered into the number. And it makes our number go up, the more they don't have collections.
Yeah.
So basically, if you're not really serious about running, don't put your name in that.
So I'm correct about that, Scott? There, we had no choice. We have to do the electronic machine voting, as per Texas law, right?
I believe stuff like that, not particularly with a specific, yeah, like a pre.
Yeah.
Look, we can't just do it as a Facebook poll.
Yeah, we can. I think that seems to be where most of city business is done anyway, why not? Oh, okay, I have a motion and a second on the floor. Any other discussion, council? All in favor of approval? So, who else? All right, moving on to item twelve. This is discuss, consider, and accept excess collections for twenty twenty-four debt service and certification for debt service collection rate for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six of the amount of eight thousand two hundred thirty-five dollars. So this was excess collection on our debt service that we have to, if I'm not mistaken, we have to assign it, put it somewhere?
And then it'll be part of the budget and we can, uh, here at office.
So on this motion, we are going to accept.
Just accepting that we took in.
Took, took in excess?
Yeah.
We do not have to assign it here. We just are accepting that we took in an excess.
Yes, sir.
We collected more than what we set out to collect. Any questions on this, Scott? Okay, all I need is a motion, second, to accept our excess collections debt service.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we accept our excess collections for the twenty twenty-four debt service and certification for debt service collection rate in the amount of eight thousand two hundred thirty-five dollars.
Okay, motion on the floor, Councilman Reesner, to accept the excess collections debt service twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, and the amount of eight thousand two hundred thirty-five dollars. Do I have a second? Second, Councilman Sanders? All in favor of approval? You announce. Uh, discuss, consider approving the Montgomery County Emergency Communications District proposed budget. You know, I often wonder, what happens if we don't accept it?
It goes by that they have to have the majority of the governing bodies in Montgomery County have to vote on it. And if we're not one that votes, then hopefully the other majority did, but going back and reading for years past.
Dave, when do I get to, and I'm sure everybody people listening to this, when do I get to vote on them, sit, what? Aw, come on.
And then the vote will switch.
Soon as you run for the board. Oh, is that the way it works? I'll be busy, I'll be. All right, let's see here. Scott, do we know what their budget is?
Ours?
No, theirs.
I know what ours is.
No, I know what ours is.
There's two million, just one point nine million. The full budget only, can you hear what it says?
So it says there's a deficit of three hundred eighty thousand eight hundred dollars that's being covered by set aside reserves, which doesn't tell you where they're coming up with nearly four hundred thousand dollars that they're overbidding.
I'm going to look back at you guys, y'all, of your voting bodies.
I, how much is this cost rent up?
Like, it just comes out of the county. Do we, does the city pay into this, Scott, or is this strictly county taxes?
This is county. This has nothing to do with our budget or anything.
So can we just take no action, or do we have to actually vote on it?
You, you guys are welcome to either take, take no action or vote.
I remember previous discussions, the biggest impact to us was nine-one-one services over here. I think that paid for a lot of the fee on your cell phone bill.
It is, yeah. I don't.
So if anything, we're kind of guaranteeing that service.
Yeah. Only, I don't think it probably matters a whole lot whether we approve it or not, you know.
You know, since they've been in deficit on, on their spending and it's a county expense that is funding them, can they come back on us for any funds to bring their budget up to?
I'm doing the same. Nine-one-one, please. Which is true. That's true, you tell them, come on. Then they got a bunch of grant, uh, they did.
I don't really think it matters, we could say yes or no.
I don't think it does, Councilman.
I think if city wishes not to approve it, then I'll make a motion that we not approve it.
Motion on the floor, Councilman Sanders, for no action on item thirteen?
No action, that's still no action.
No action.
No action.
No action or do not approve.
I'm saying do not approve.
So two separate things. We can either just ignore it completely and say, we're not going to vote on it, or we can say, we're not in favor of it, we disagree.
I'm not in favor of it. So I'm, I'm gonna say we'll note on this budget.
Okay, so motion on the floor, Councilman Sanders, to not approve the Montgomery County Emergency Communications District budget proposal. Do I have a second on the not approve motion?
Actually, I'll second because unless they can get it in budget, I would be inclined to say they shouldn't be operating four hundred thousand dollars over their budget.
All right, uh, seconded by Councilman Davis. Any other discussion, council? All in approval of not approving the budget? One, two, two, four, all against not approving the budget? One, all abstentions, two, we got two abstentions, one, another, another, another. So nothing, didn't pass, didn't go anywhere. Okay? Second chance, want to amend your motion?
Nope. Derek, the item on the agenda is discuss and consider approving.
Yes.
At this point, Derek, you can either pass on the item or if somebody wants to make a motion to approve, we can do that. I think that might be futile.
I understand.
Yeah.
Motion for no action? Could be no action on.
There'd be no action or motion passed.
I'll make a move, no action.
Motion on the floor, Councilman Sanders, no action. Do I have a second on no action? Councilman Reesner? All in approval of no action on item thirteen? Um, I'm making my job tough tonight. Two, is that a three?
Why, why are we voting for no action?
You can just pass.
We can just pass.
We can just pass. If there's no motion to approve on the floor, you can just pass.
I, I am always the mayor, the guy that always likes council to make that decision. So I will make the decision this time. We are going to pass on item thirteen. No action on item thirteen. Item fourteen, discuss, consider approving Montgomery County Emergency Communications District Board of Managers voting ballot. I would have one recommend, recommendation. Uh, that would be Chip, Matt Steinberg?
No, sir. It's Paul Bergadomo.
Say it again.
Paul Bergadomo.
Oh, I thought this was the, this was the guy we just got. Oh, never mind, I am so sorry.
You know, Chip's the one that.
Okay. I like the good things I heard about, you know, man, that's, that's another long name.
Paul has been the representative for the past eight years and is going to back on the ballot again this year.
So I'll ask council, do we want to recommend anyone for Montgomery County Communications District Board of Managers?
I don't know either one of them, so I'm uncomfortable by coming in at either one.
All right, neither do I. Everybody good?
Same.
Okay, no action, item fourteen. Item fifteen, discuss, consider approval, Code of Ordinance, Chapter Eight, Article Six, Substandard Buildings. That is yours, that is your.
Can I comment on this?
Absolutely, on which? On which one?
Uh, well, I just want to tell you that there is a, uh, an eyesore with, and I can't find the ordinance to deal with it. But I got a broken garage door. It's leaning like this, corner to corner, and I can't seem to find anything to do anything about it. And if that is in this ordinance, that's going to make my job a lot easier. So I did read through this before, but I wasn't looking at it then. But this would be a perfect opportunity to squeeze that in there. If it's already done, it'd be great.
So there is a general statement that everything has to be structurally sound and in compliance with our building codes?
The garage door is underneath the header and it doesn't affect the structure. But it is very unsightly and especially when you have to view the content inside.
It does say that the buildings have to be lockable, I believe. So if it's not, if you can't close it, then it's not lockable.
Okay, sounds good to me, doesn't it?
I think it's the way, I'd have to go back and look through this sheet. It's been a couple of months since I've made these edits.
Well, y'all probably read it a lot closer than I did.
All structural elements have to be sounded in good repair, including but not limited to walls, roofs, and other vertical structural members. Anything that leans or bends in excess of one quarter inch per foot vertically or horizontally.
To declare a nuisance, you have to have a hearing, I guess?
Yes.
So could that fall under that too?
I'm just having a hearing.
They declared that a nuisance.
Says at the top of page seven, the building's roof, walls, or floors contain holes that would allow insects, parasites, rodents, or other pets gaining access to the building for harm or to the extent consulting present hazard to health and safety. I wouldn't think you could use it as wall. If the garage would close the wall then.
Sounds weak.
Also, page five, number three, roofs and walls are not, are not weather tight and waterproof. So it says a door for a wall?
Look at, look at number nine on page six.
That sums it up pretty good, I think.
Yeah, I can read that one again. I, I'd send that on one second. That, that might cover it. There's probably a couple of different things in here that cover that. All I know is we need something because had I had to get involved, highly involved in that council environment if they refused to start, uh, taking it down, I'd need some ammunition to be able to handle stuff like that instead of us having to go to the council and say, can you hurry up and do that?
Once they got a location, it sure didn't take them long to get it down.
Yeah, well, it was great. And that wasn't a problem at all. I'd like to see all our problems work out that way.
Yeah.
But right now, we got a hole in a roof, uh, um, that is worrying me. And I need some kind of ordinance to be able to take care of something.
Well, that's what this was intended to address.
Well, that number nine.
Yeah, number nine, chump.
Number nine, sure, covers that.
Yeah, I, I mean. Page six. IX, down at the bottom. Building or structure is subject to activities involving sale or use or abuse on said premises or illicit drugs or alcohol or other similar activities certified by chief of police, park officer, city health officer. That would definitely come in handy if someone took over the house for illegal activities. So yes, that would definitely be all too. In combination of that, I have there the ten, ninth, would, uh, help in that particular situation. I would love for y'all to give me some ammunition with.
Well, look at, look at, if you look at room five, you're talking about a hole into the, into the, into the house. Uh, there you, there you go, number five.
Yeah, so it has to pass first. It's been sitting on the council's hands for two, two and a half years.
No, 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 I know, I'm just saying, you were talking about the.
Yeah, it, it sounds like it's given, given plenty of conditions to deal with things.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
So actually, item five on page five might be, parts that are not properly attached so they may fall or injure members of public or property. So if it's defective, then you can, you can handle it correctly. Either lower it all the way to the ground, it doesn't have to be functional, but it can't be at a point where it can fall on somebody.
Oh, yeah, especially what I'm looking at here. So, yes.
I'll take this in. Item ten, so there are four. Alright, there you go, that's, that covers that real arsenal. So, yeah, it actually is. This covers substandards and, uh, and dangerous, that's right here.
Let's get some done so that I can take the action.
Do I just make a comment? Uh, I mean, looks like all the new things have been taken care of, but our dates, I'll say to get work done within ninety days, uh, for some of these items, it's not gonna happen. Uh, so we, we need to seriously look at the time also, saying, there's one place that said you have to have them in twenty days, have to have a hearing. I can't imagine that happening. So I think some of the, some of the timeframes that we have need to be, uh, looked at.
I think most of these, if I recall correctly, I'm not looking at specific lines, that they have to initiate repairs, not that they have to be completed by, but they have to begin working on it, maintain continuous work on it.
I have to go back and look, I don't recall that, but I, I do know it better than I have, that's just from looking through it.
This.
So keep in mind, if there is a criminal penalty, that's the attorney to make sure I'm right. We haven't published this in the paper for so long before I could even use it.
Right.
So if we go a double month, then that's another month or two worth of publishing before this can even be enforced.
No public hearing requires a, for, two, not passing.
Too passive?
Not to pass this, right?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's one to look at, yeah.
Okay, discuss, consider approval, Code of Ordinance, Chapter Eight, Article Six, Substandards for Buildings.
Just, Councilman Reesner? If you look on page eleven, item C, hearing officer may not allow the owner more than ninety days to perform fully all work required, comply with order, unless they submit a detailed plan and a time schedule for the work at the time of the year. So as long as they present the plan of how long it's going to take, and that they've got a, a complete schedule worked out, then it doesn't have to be complete within ninety days, they just have to submit their schedule and a plan to have it done.
That's fair, there's one that talks about twenty days, even though we're looking at that.
So I guess my request would be, as the chief has mentioned, in order to give him something to use, is that we pass and then modify it, if there are things we want to modify later. Unless there's something specific in there you want to address now. There are a few things that still have to be added in here, a few definitions.
If we give them ninety days, what happens to we have those working, we have trees, and everything else? How does that affect, a lot of times you can't get the structure people are used to doing.
Again, I think what we're trying to do is have them come up with a plan of what's going on. What we don't want is some of the homes that we now have gone a year and nothing has taken place. Right, it's got a blue tarp with a hole in it, but no action has been taken on it in a year since Hurricane Burrow. And so now it's just an eyesore, it's a danger to the public, it could be squatters, it could be kids going in there through broken windows, and there's no method for us to enforce anything, but they have to make repairs.
How many houses do we have in C right now that's, that's following beneath this?
Two that I can think of right now that I'm having to deal with on, uh...
And that's been over a year?
Uh, I'm sure there's probably more, actually, there's, there's one more that, that potentially falls in. Uh, I have to look closer, so three.
Okay.
I can't think of any more, but we never, there could be another one, I'm not aware of it.
So these changes should rectify some of our...
Have a new, with code enforcement. If you give me the ammunition to do what I need to do, if it's not done in time, commander, like I certainly blame me for not doing the product and the process right, or not having it all up. But this gives me the ammunition that I need to be able to take care of some of that.
Okay.
And some of these people in the audience are gonna probably give you an applause if you're on passes.
Yes, I think so.
And I know I've said this over and over again, but as I was researching this and putting it together, we're one of the very few cities in this state that doesn't have this type of ordinance in place, so.
I feel we need...
What it's worth. It is a pretty standard thing. They teach that in code enforcement class, as if every city has it. I'm sitting here saying, oh, our city don't have it yet, so.
I was gonna give you a very good...
You're close right now?
Yeah. It's been sitting on our agenda for two or three years, so. Maybe it's one of the first in the year.
To be fair, I believe it fell off the agenda. Part of that is going to need to cut down.
So, did you find what you were looking for, Councilman Sanders? No, people, you're, you're... Yeah.
We have anything else, Mr. Fip?
No, sir.
Mr. Fip?
It's all, he's gonna go with the edits.
Here, bless me.
He can stay in his block, he's not including, not the reds.
Thank you for, for coming.
Mr. Fip?
You're welcome.
Is there any other discussion?
Sorry, boy, he was looking for a particular sentence that he wants to probably make an amendment on during this motion.
Sorry, we're just saying that when we do make the motion to pass it, it needs to be passive with all edits attached.
Okay. And without, and excluding any council notes or, uh, comment provisions.
With or without?
Without, without putting, completely. Essentially without highlighting text.
No, we did, yeah. No, it just has to be published in the newspaper. There is no public hearing on that.
Do we have to appoint someone to be the, the code enforcement officer authorized to do all the achieving?
So the building official is appointed by the administrator, so that could be code enforcement, it could be chief, it could be somebody else.
So, yeah, that, that falls by common...
Uh, page fifteen of fifteen. Uh, page fifteen of fifteen.
Fifteen of fifteen?
Uh, there it is. Uh, the hearing officer must conduct a hearing within twenty days after such request is filed.
I'm sorry, which, where are we looking at?
Page fifteen of fifteen.
Page fifteen of fifteen.
What is that?
Uh, where it says the hearing officer must conduct a hearing within twenty days after such request is filed. We're, we're dictating a schedule for somebody who do not be able to...
Noticeal number three, first paragraph, halfway through the...
Yes, sir, I'm reading that. Within twenty days after such a request has been filed.
Yeah, the hearing officer, so what it requests is, it's gotta be done within twenty days, and it's the timing that I have the issue with.
I think only the hearing has to be dealt with in twenty days, it doesn't mean all the work has to be excluded.
But the people that's gonna say, put the hearing together, you're gonna have a hearing officer this schedule? I don't know.
Page three, you're on.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, three.
Number three. Over paragraph.
I don't have a problem having that hearing, but I, I think that's setting schedules for people we have no power over.
Which are you saying we have no power over?
Saying the hearing officer must set a hearing within twenty days.
We're the hearing officer, so we have power over that. The homeowner has to comply or request an extension.
I don't think that we define as the hearing officer.
The hearing officer on top of this. The city must conduct a hearing before the hearing officer has proved provided in the article that which the owner may testify or present witness or written information about any matter relating to the city securing the building.
So the hearing officer is person or persons designated by the city administrator to perform the duties.
Correct.
So...
So the hearing officer is ours, it could be chief, it could be an independent officer, it could be a council member, it could be anybody that the city administrator appoints for that position.
But within thirty days would be better because it would fall on normal scheduled council meetings.
I have no problem with thirty days, I think twenty days...
Sir, you're asking that we change twenty to thirty?
Yes.
In that one line? Okay.
Page fifteen, number three, change twenty days halfway through to thirty days. Any other? James, get out there, go councilman for it, councilman Oles.
Yeah.
If there's no other discussion, I'd like to make a motion.
Any other discussion, council? Motion on the floor, Councilman Oles?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Code of Ordinance, Chapter Eight, Article, uh, Six, Substandard Buildings, with the edits, with the amendment of moving the twenty day hearings to thirty day hearings and leaving out D. N. O. S. as Mr. Francis.
Sound good?
Yeah.
It does?
Yeah. So long as we can all understand.
Yes.
Going back.
Everybody good with that language? Okay. Well, I do have a motion on the floor to accept with amendments and excluding, uh, council notes. Do I have a second? Second? Second, so Councilman Sanders? Any other discussion? All favor? One, two, three, four, five, the damage, thank you all for that. Chief, there you go. So, Scott, you got posted? Newspaper, one, just one source, right?
Yes, is this the count that we have published, sir?
Yes, that we do need to publish this ordinance.
Because there's P. Because there's P.
There's also criminal penalty, I think.
There's currently the P's attached, so we have to... Discussion, did, did, no matter discussed, we closed executive session, that's strange. Okay, at this time, council, Scott, I have nothing for closed executive session. Okay. That was item sixteen, item seventeen, city council requests, future agenda items, go ahead, council.
Uh, I would like to request for a stop sign at Appian and Roman Forge, make its way back to the agenda at least for discussion and/or approval.
Yeah, absolutely.
So if there are things that I'm not aware of, a reason to not do it, I'd like to at least have those discussions. And then, secondly, I would like to request a workshop for code enforcement to understand the process, and if there's a way we can improve or enhance the time from bringing the issue up until the time it's resolved. So whether that's a workshop, a call, or something, but I would like to request that the judge and/or the prosecutor be there to understand what's happening if the citation makes it to court. Are they being enforced, or are they being waived? So my request is like, if somebody has a, a violation for not maintaining their district, right? And we get to the point that we're writing that citation, we're actually writing them a ticket, and then we write them another ticket the next week, right, they have seven days after the notice. So we write them another ticket, and another ticket, and another ticket, and they've done nothing. And at some point, the city mows it. Now they have our cost in addition to those tickets. When it gets to court, what is being done with that? Are we collecting that revenue to offset our cost? Or is the judge waiving those and say, just pay one ticket, go on your way?
I've learned to stay out of the court business and not check on it because I get upset about it.
That's the reason I would like the judge to answer to the city council, what are we enforcing? And I, last time I had this discussion was more than a year ago. He said his direction by the state was to clear the doctrine. If that means waiving five tickets and paying one, then that's what he's going to do. And I would like to just understand, if that's what we're doing, then we're wasting our time writing multiple violations, and they're allowing the individuals to continue to not comply because we're waiving the citations.
And there is a separation between the enforcement and the...
Absolutely. But I'd like somebody on the court to speak to that, whether that's the prosecutor or the judge, to find out what's actually happening with those.
I think, I think that would be a great meeting between the court and the, and the council.
Leave me out of the court.
I'm just kinda, I wasn't like...
The judge elected or appointed for you.
Have, have me in a separate meeting about the enforcement.
You know, I, I want jurisdiction, uh, part of it, the, the, the judge part of it to meet with council separate from you and code enforcement. So, great idea. So, full of council, let's get, let's get some dates for the workshop.
We're gonna get dates, it's not for budget workshops.
Yes, we need to do that too, that was mine, I was bringing up, go ahead, are you? Other concerns, future agenda items, or, did, did, uh, budget workshop, we need to get some dates started?
We've got some tentative ones that we talked about, but it depends on what they make with y'all.
Let's just worry about the first one right now, say the first one?
August eleventh.
August eleventh, that's on Monday night?
Yes.
Would that be at six o'clock?
Yes.
Everybody looking at the calendar?
Yes.
Everybody looking at the calendar? Good? There it is, down there, budget workshop. Second?
Budget workshop.
Budget workshop. It's not set stone yet, we're looking at, uh, August eleventh, six o'clock, good? Councilman Farn, you good?
I'm good, yeah.
Okay, alright.
Thank you.
We're good with that, let's go ahead and set first, we'll, we'll, we'll set the next one at that budget workshop.
It's just a calendar.
All stuff, it's pretty handy too, it's special. Alright, that was my future agenda item, was budget workshop, anyone have anything else?
What time is it?
Six o'clock, August eleventh.
Can we do it any earlier?
We can. Is anybody, okay, is everybody okay with five thirty?
Five.
Okay.
Forbidden.
Yeah, I, well, so, I'm in the gallery on Mondays, so the quickest I can get back here is five, five fifteen. Fifteen, almost two hours to go, but it's a long, it's a long day, so we can start at five thirty.
Well, let's look at five.
Well, five is tight for you.
Yeah, I can't make five.
Five thirty, five thirty, okay with everybody? Do you want one? So, five thirty, August eleventh, first meeting, we'll set the second meeting at that meeting. Any other concerns, agenda items, council?
No, agenda items, I'll say one thing.
Sure.
Because my wife passed it up last week, I don't think all that, uh, sent to Donald Sis, text messages and everything, and, and different things they did, I just don't think they're one. Also, I think it would be scheduled to be two nights, they've done it now.
Yes, sir. I thought it only appropriate. Alright, anything else?
I have a date for the workshop, enforcement workshop.
Go ahead, throw one out there. I was gonna let you email everybody a few, a couple of dates and let everybody agree on that one. You, because there's other parties involved that you're gonna need to contact. Yeah, let's do, let's do that.
You do realize that Judge Draxler now is soda for court here.
He can handle, he can beat us.
So it's... What time is court starting?
Six.
Six, yeah.
So I don't know how long the meeting's gonna take, but we do it before court. I mean, his input is really just, what is his direction that he's taking in court with... I mean, his input is really just, what is his direction that he's taking in court with citations for code enforcement? There's multiple citations. And again, it, it may not be up to him, he may have been given direction from somebody else of what he needs to do.
We also have a prosecutor that just started last time, or this might be their first time at WIR, so...
They would both be here the night of court.
Really, I've not been able to feel the land with that person yet either.
Yeah, so they would both be here the night of court, if we could have them both come in one hour early.
August.
So, what do I do on that night?
Absolutely, say, they're driving anyway, they just need to get here early, if that's possible.
The judge is usually here...
Those are Tuesday night?
Yes, Tuesday night, August nineteenth.
Mr. Harden, are you available for five on a Tuesday, if that were to happen?
Uh, I might be a few minutes late, but, yeah, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, I'm calibrated, so...
Yeah, Tuesdays. If that's available to him.
Yeah, if that's available, listen, go ahead and, uh, list that on there.
Okay.
Yeah, five, five fifteen, I agree with councilman Oles, I don't think it's gonna be a long meeting, it's just gonna be some questions this month.
Yeah, the first and third Tuesdays of the month are not good with me. The first and third Tuesdays of the month are not good with me.
Does, does you think the third?
I'm not changing with that. That's what court is, I mean...
Oh, that's the fourth, the third Tuesday? Okay. Approaching with that, let me know.
Yes, sir.
We're gonna be missing, but we don't have another opportunity, uh, to make them both drive over on a different night. I mean, we can do that, but let's, let's try this first with them. Yeah, anything else, counsel? Just need a motion, second? Motion on the floor, councilman Sanders, your motion, sir? To adjourn.
I need a motion to adjourn, I'm sorry.
No, you get a motion on the floor, councilman Sanders to adjourn for the evening. Second, councilman Oles, seconds, all in favor of adjournment? unanimous, this meeting is adjourned at eight thirteen.